Good evening and welcome to the July 12, 2007, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any changes to the minutes?
None.
No more motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. We have two quasi judicial items tonight, so anybody that plans on speaking on either of these items, please take the oath. Terry will administer that.
Can you swear our firm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, the passing of the truth?
I do.
Okay. The first item is not on consent. The falls at Grand Harbor request for plumber plat approval for replat of the falls at Grand Harbor Track F. GH Vero Beach Development LLC owner, masteler molar agent located within the overall Grand Harbor development and is bordered by US Highway 1 on the west, Grand Harbor Boulevard on the north, and Indian River Boulevard on the east. Zoning classification is RM8, and that's residential multifamily up to eight units per acre. Land use designation is M1 medium density up to eight units per acre. And as I said before, this is quasi judicial. Steve, you're not going to do this?
Actually, we have this on consent, so we'd be glad to...
It says item...oh, I'm sorry. I read it wrong. I thought it said item not on consent.
Could we ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
Your speaker.
Why don't you just go ahead and formally pull the item? I'm sorry, Stan. I just misread that.
Well, it's just been pulled anyway, so...
Okay. What's the question?
I was...how do you define recreation?
It's pretty broad term. It could be passive. If it's active recreation, we have special buffering standards and lighting standards for it. When we have designated areas on plats, either right-of-way, stormwater, lots, and in this case, since it was designated landscape only, they could not put any recreation improvements on there, regardless if it was just, you know, if it were a clubhouse or a pool or anything like that, that could not be done on that particular parcel. And so generally speaking, you know, those types of amenities are figured out ahead of time, at the time of the dedication. I think this is something that the residents want now, and that's why the developers come in and ask to redesignate this so they can put in some additional recreational amenities.
So does that affect the open space and...
They exceeded the overall open space, so the level of improvements they do here won't take them below any of our minimums, but yeah, there will be, overall, there'll be less green space. There will be some new impervious area as a result of this.
So why wasn't this anticipated before? Is this just like an after the fact, you know, hey, we'd like to do this?
Pretty much. That's correct. And it may have even been a situation where they felt they could do some improvements, but the type of...a lot of times what we've found is that as a neighborhood develops, the type of recreational amenities people desire might change as well. So it's not that unusual. The unusual thing is they didn't designate it for multiple uses at the front end when it was platted a few years ago.
But when you look at the drawing, it looks, it's kind of difficult to understand what the differences or the improvements or the changes are going to be.
They just want to put a pool in. That's what I understand anyway, correct?
Correct.
So now it's designated for landscape track only, so we have to approve the change to recreation.
That's correct.
To allow them to do that.
Does this fall under the same guidelines as kind of like, you know, what we were talking about when we go through rezonings? If somebody says they're going to do something, they can change their mind later?
Well, in PDs especially, when it comes to recreational amenities, those tend to get more defined now than they did a few years ago. This is almost like them undoing a private restriction on this property that happens to have been accomplished via a plat. And so, you know, staff has no objection in putting in a different type of amenity here rather than landscaping only.
So do you have the layout of what they're planning and they're not going to change it or...
Right. I think staff has reviewed a layout, a site plan layout for this. That's actually what started this. They were inquiring about doing a pool and then going over site planning issues, and this was one hurdle they have to get over to put in that type of amenity.
Okay.
But we tend, actually, what's kind of interesting with this one, we tend to see sometimes people not putting in amenities that may have been promised here. They're putting in an additional one in a sense.
Any other issue?
Your attachment number two, that's the way it is today? Track F? And whether they're going to be obliterating the...is it an island or...
Put a pool in there.
In terms of the plans, if you want a little more explanation of the site plan, I think the developers here, you can kind of go over a little bit of the history if you want to get a little more background on that.
Do we have to make the whole track recreation? Am I hearing that you would like to see the island-kept landscape?
I think it adds a little bit.
I think from staff's perspective, we wouldn't want to get back into the same situation a couple of years from now. If they wanted to put in something that you could be termed recreation and then not be allowed, they have to go back through this process of redesignating. It's not unusual to have kind of a share...actually landscaping recreation is a fairly common kind of mixed-use designation, so to speak, on a track. So yeah, the staff has no problems with this, but if you want a little more background, like I said, the applicants here, they can address it.
Harbor Branch has done a real nice job in landscaping with natives and things around, especially around ponds and things, and hate to see them lose some of that, but...
Problem is, you did such a nice job there. We don't want to see you take it away.
Chris Clary, Director of Development, Grand Harbor. We're not going to touch the island. That was never the intent. We have a pool that goes before you get to the island, and we took out a, we're trying to take out a kitchen putt. There's just no use for it, so we're putting in a cabana pool, leaving the island the way it is. If you want to stipulate that, I don't care.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve.
Second. Our track.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll read this one correctly. This is a public hearing coming up next. Hibiscus Children's Center requests for special exception approval to convert an existing group home building to a daycare center. Hibiscus Children's Center owner Neil Schaefer is the agent located on the south side of 12th Street west of Old Dixie Highway. The zoning classification on this is RM6 residential multifamily up to six units per acre. The land use designation is L2 low-density residential 2 up to six units per acre. The overall density on this project is 4.7 units per acre, and this also is quasi judicial. John?
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. This is a request from Hibiscus Children's Center for special exception use approval for a daycare. In 2002, Hibiscus Children's Center was granted special exception approval for a group home, and their proposal is to convert one of those group home buildings into a daycare building. Now, special exception uses are uses that typically are not appropriate in a zoning district or may not be appropriate in a zoning district, but when located in certain areas and meeting certain criteria are appropriate, and that's the case that the staff will demonstrate to you. As far as descriptions and conditions, special exception uses have specific LDR criteria in the land use section that the staff applies. And when applying those criteria, those are to ensure the appropriateness and the compatibility of the uses. The applicant will be going through two public hearings, one before you all, one before the Board of County Commissioners. And the PNZ is really charted with evaluating the appropriateness and the compatibility and then making a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on the special exception use request, and you all have a variety of options, whether to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or recommend denial. The site's located on the south side of 12th Street, and this slide shows the zoning of the adjacent parcels. To the north, it's RM6, and that site is actually being annexed into the city of Vero Beach. To the east is commercial. To the south is RM6 zone multifamily, but actually single-family use. And Waterford Lakes is to the west. Again, it's zoned multifamily, and that does allow a plat over the site plan, which essentially is actually what Waterford Lakes is. This is an older aerial of the area, again, showing before the development, showing the subject site and showing the uses around the subject site. Again, Waterford Lakes had not been developed. Property to the north showing a single-family. A lot of those single-family homes have been removed from the site and the commercial use to the east. A newer aerial shows the subject site as it is today, showing the removal of the single-family homes to the north, showing Waterford Lakes is built out. This is a closer, more detailed view. You can see the recreation area in the center of the site. The site or the home outlined in red is actually the subject of tonight's hearing, and that's the group home, the residential home, that they're going to convert into the daycare as their proposal. You can see the commercial site to the west and see how the site fronts on 12th Street. This is a layout, and again, all these buildings are existing, all the improvements are existing, all the site-related improvements. We'll actually be doing some internal modifications to convert the building to a daycare, but there won't be any exterior modifications to the site. There are eight residential units out there and the clubhouse. The seven that you see in red are the existing group homes that are going to remain group homes. The one in green is the building, the group home that's going to be converted. The orange or yellow building on the slide is the clubhouse that folks actually pass through to gain access. You see the traffic circulation system, which is a one-way driveway from 12th Street, entering on the west and exiting on the east. Couple of other items I'd like to point out is, for the daycare, the capacity proposed is 37 children. With that, they're going to propose to reduce the capacity of the group home from 74 residents to 59 residents. And as shown on the aerial, the retention area is actually a dry retention area. This area is on the sand ridge, so there's a, it's a dry retention that sort of is co-used as a green area slash retention. Other items, there are actually one space over the required parking. They are served by county utilities. There's no change to the proposed approved landscape. They will need to make sure that all that landscape that was on their original approved landscape plan is viable. There is a criterion in the code for a type C buffer under certain circumstances that's somewhat judgmental or a judgment call. In this case, with the area being converted, the building being converted so close to 12th Street and so close to the commercial area, it does, the staff has not required a type C buffer. As far as the specific land use criteria, it is required to be on a paved road, which it is. It is required to have a drop-off that requires that you not back into the right-of-way, and the parking lot will serve for that. There are criteria that require them to meet the minimum state recreational and interiors. They'll be licensed by the state, and that will make sure that they meet that, and there are minimum setbacks for the playground area, which are also met. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the Board of County Commissioners grant special exception use approval. Thank you.
John, could you go back to that latest aerial? Now, where would this type C buffer be if it was required?
The type C buffer could potentially be required along the south and the west property lines. Again, the group home and the playground are, this is greater than 150 feet, and this is a significant...
Okay. What's in that cutout right there? The white, I guess that's a parking lot.
That's a not included parcel, and it's a cleared lot, I believe, right now, but it's not part of this project or part of this ownership.
Okay.
It'd be a tough piece to sell, wouldn't it?
Go ahead.
It didn't mention the age of the children, what kind of daycare center, what age bracket is going to be there?
Yeah. The applicant can shed more light on that, but it's my understanding it's essentially up to preschool, so it'll be up to four and five-year-olds. I don't know if they're going to accept any children over that age, but they, we're working on a pre-K program.
My concern, is there some way to contain them? There'll be a fence around that, some way to keep them from wandering out into the traffic? It's pretty close to them.
Correct. And there already is a security on the site.
Okay.
Shows, should show right here, and I think the red line obscures the rest of it, but there is...
Okay. Great. Thank you. So what kind of a path are they going to take from delivering the children to getting to the facility?
Pickup, drop-off.
Yeah. I'm not positive on that, but it's my understanding that they would come through the clubhouse, sort of check in, sign in, and then come over to the facility. One thing I did neglect to indicate in talking with the applicant, they're believing about a third of the children will be children that are already on-site.
Right. I think that was covered in the backup.
Yeah.
John, I think you've answered the question, but would you go back to the slide that has the parking lot on it? Ingress, egress, that's it. And there's, I understood you to say that that is an allowable drop-off area, but there's no designated actual drop-off. They just exit where parking spaces are? I thought there had to be a designated drop-off area where somebody would be standing and take them across it where no one can park.
The code requires, what the code requires is that there is not backing into the right-of-way, so you couldn't have spaces that fronted on the right-of-way. The code does allow you to have a parking lot that you can pull into, stop, unload, and then it would be up to the parent to walk the child in. There are daycare certainly designed where you have a drive-up facility...
Dedicated drop-off area.
A dedicated drop-off area. That's not required in our code.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from up here? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Discussion?
I'd sure like to see a dedicated drop-off area, but I don't guess we're going to be able to do that. How do we, do we, have we ever come across this before?
I don't think so.
No.
You would need to change the LDRs, and one of the things I would caution you about is many of our daycares are converted single-family homes that are on large roads, and sometimes they lend themselves to having a drop-off and sometimes they don't. So again, it's a site consideration that you want to figure how many you're going to make non-conforming if you look at that going forward and how many...
Yeah. The one we had last meeting had a large drop-off area, which was really beautifully done, well-designed, but I guess we just don't have any way to get around this, do we?
I was just going to mention, we've had a few, y'all have seen them, we've had a few daycare uses come through. Traditional, I think, especially starting with a new site, we've seen a dedicated drop-off area and so forth. I'm thinking of the Daisy Hope Center was kind of off to the side of the building because of the configuration of the site, and they did have a drop-off area, but there were also parking spaces, and they had a pedestrian path that went around the spaces. So you probably tend to need a little more flexibility sometimes on existing sites, you know, for getting them in and out. Obviously, it's not the only use of this site. In fact, it's not even the primary use of this site. The rest of it's a group home, so you kind of have to take that into consideration.
I would think, Stan, that the owners, given that a parent had to pull into a parking place, get out of the car, and walk the child to the facility, that's one issue. If they are going to just stop as they go through and let the child out and let them walk, then I would think the owner would want a couple of those parking spaces if they're allowed to do so, to make that a specific area where children are to walk through and no one's to try to park in that area.
Now, you're correct. They're probably, you know, I think most owners would operationally keep some of those spaces open during the drop-off time and maybe have somebody out there to help kids in. I'm sure those kinds of operational things take place. The key, I think, as John was saying, is that this is all well off the roadway, and any kind of stopping or stacking that happens occurs on-site.
Right. I guess that was the thing that kind of piqued my interest, was that the children are going to be taking quite a distance to get to this building, so that was also my concern.
I'll make a motion. We approve with staff's recommendations.
We have one motion. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. John, I'm going to let you take over on this next item.
Okay. Commissioners matters. At the last Board of County Commissioners meeting, there was a discussion regarding the Kennedy rezoning, where Planning and Zoning denied the approval of the rezoning. And I know that the commissioners have requested that the minutes be truncated, but maybe we're truncating them just a little too much. The Board of County Commissioners couldn't figure out why we voted that way, what our reasoning was for denial. So I'd like to have a little discussion regarding the minutes and maybe adding a little bit more. I mean, Terry, you do a great job, and I'm sure they're happy when they see really short minutes, but I think somehow or other we have to work our reasoning into the minutes. And I'd like Mr. Keating's opinion on that, or what he thinks we can do to fix.
I think you know that we're all operating on budget crunches and budget reductions, and I think that's one of the reasons for the truncated minutes. The board is going through some modifications to their staff in the board office, and I think they saw an opportunity where, I think state law just requires certain minimal things being minutes, you know, particularly who's there, what items came up, what the motions were, and how they came out. I think one advantage that we have now is all the meetings are recorded, they're available for any commissioner or anyone from the public to look at over the internet or to get a DVD of the meeting. But as you said, another option is to, as part of the motion, put in any reasoning that you have and make it actually part of the specific wording.
Okay. So the onus is going to be on us to make sure that the wording is adequate.
Either that or, as Bob said, the commissioners can go to the meeting video and take a look. I know it's sometimes hard to do that, you know, especially when you're doing it over the internet to get to a specific spot on the video. Want to make any recommendations or...
Well, prior to this, the Board of County Commissioners had requested that anybody who, let's say we have a five to two vote, they want to know why the two people have not voted with the main body. So now I think we're going to have to make two, two things, why we voted for it and why the people voted against it. We're going to have to make those statements.
That's...
And all we have to say for that Kennedy issue was compatibility. Maybe it was considered speculative rezoning. We didn't see a reason for it. Yeah, Bob, it was.
But I don't think there's anything wrong with a speculative rezoning if it meets the requirements. I mean, we look at the requirements, not someone's intent.
Well, all right, let's not go back to that one issue. Let's just, should we be saying why?
I think it would be appropriate if they included in the minutes any statements that are made along with, along with the motion, that clarifies an intent. I think Terry will probably agree with that.
Maybe we should just specifically say, hey, you know, let's include this reasoning in the minutes.
And we're just going to have to be cognizant of it when we do our voting then. Thank you.
I agree, Bob, that, you know, following the minimum requirements of law, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that in reading the minutes. But I do think that when a commissioner makes a point that causes some discussion between the parties, that that should be included. Now, I know that that's then is judgmental and that the person has to say, well, was that really important or it wasn't? But when you try to go back, say, two or three months to what, and read the minutes to try to bring something back up that you're going to look at, that's when it becomes important. And I know we can always go get a CD, but it's nice to have it in that, in your own office if you have it without it being...
You know, I really agree with you, because you don't know how many times we go back and look at minutes and...
It's more than...
Yeah. I mean, we research things back 10, 15, 20 years, and it is, it's helpful to us to look at the minutes and not see, not just the motions that were made, but some of the discussion that occurred. Unfortunately, cuts have to be made someplace, and just another thing, I think, I think the board office, how many do you have? I think we have about 30, 35 committees that my department's responsible for, and that's most of them in the county. But it was a judgment, you know, a decision made by the board based on the fact that that's a lot of work, the minutes, a lot of staff time, too.
Thank you.
Donna, why don't you go ahead and take over the traffic engineering stuff as well? You brought that up.
Oh, Chris, the turn lane!
You lucky devil.
Oh, I forgot to research that.
Something new.
Yes. The discussion, we did have a discussion regarding turn lanes, and we have gone through this issue a number of times, and we've revised the land development regulations a few times to increase or to increase the number of situations where left turn lanes are required. We keep coming back to the issue that maybe we need to rethink some of the numbers when we have developments on major roads like 43rd, 58th, 66th, where we have a development that maybe only has maybe 20, I don't remember what number it is that trips the turn lane, but we may be short the number that trips the requirement for a turn lane, but we're on a major road where maybe we should be reducing that criteria and make it smaller number of trips that will trip, smaller number of highway trips that starts the requirement for the left turn lane. So that's what we were discussing at one of the 66th Avenue subdivisions. We talked about the left turn lane there. We cannot require the left turn lane, and I understand you're putting a median in there anyway, so we can't put a left turn lane. Is that true? That's true? Okay. So let's look at, you were going to talk to us about some of the numbers that are, that tripped the requirement for the left turn lane and how maybe we can rethink some of those numbers on major roads.
Right. And that's, well, that's pretty much what I've done tonight. My name is Chris Moore, for the record. I'm the Assistant County Public Works Director. And I understand at the last meeting that the staff was asked to bring forward a kind of a state of where we stand in our turn lane standards and some of the standards that we currently are implementing and using and applying to developments. So what I've done is I've just put together kind of a short summary of our turn lane standards as they are today and a little bit of a history. Some of the things I'm going to talk about, I'll first define the turn lanes that we're going to be discussing. We'll look at the history of our county turn lane standards, how they've come about and why we are where we are today, our current requirements that we use, and then I'm going to look at, attempt to show you how those current standards have been evaluated over the last couple of years. We've gone through actually two evaluation programs on our turn lane requirements. Starting with the definition of turn lanes, our code, our land development regulations, 95212, specify that under certain circumstances, a development is required to put in a 12-foot-wide right or left turn ingress lane with the appropriate storage and transition. And basically what that means is they are to build a left or right turn lane on a county road to serve a particular development. Now, what are turn lanes? Very basically, and these are just kind of simple drawings to illustrate, but on the top you see a two-lane road versus a two-lane road with a T intersection and a... two-lane road versus a two-lane road with a T intersection, and a right turn lane kind of stubbed out, and it's just an extension of pavement to form an additional lane for a short distance, so that motorists can get out of the through lane and into a, into a protected lane or pocket. So, it gets them out of the traffic stream, so that they can decelerate and make the right turn safely. On the bottom, you see a typical left turn lane that's kind of been hollowed out, out of the median section. And that's basically how left turn lanes on divided roads are built. They pave a section of the median for a distance, and they usually have a short, if you're going from right to left on that drawing, they have a short transition area where people can move into the turn lane and then decelerate. And since it's a left turn lane, you typically need a little more storage area, because the turning vehicles have to actually stack until they find a gap in traffic and can then, can then turn into the cross street. Now, the county over the years has developed standards for turn lanes as far as the construction goes. And in fact, these are pavement marking, signing, and geometric standards that we have posted on the Internet, and that developers who have to build turn lanes actually go by when they, when they design them. And we have standards, these are a little bit hard to read, because they're, they're an AutoCAD, twenty-four by thirty-six AutoCAD drawing, zoomed down to fit on a PowerPoint slide. But what it is, is basically how to develop a turn lane if you're taking a two-lane road and changing it to a three-lane road with a center-left turn lane. And these are county standards, and they're kind of hard to see, but these tables on the bottom actually tell you how long to make the turn lane, depending on what the design speed, what the speed limit of the roadway is, and how many left turners you're actually predicting are going to be using that turn lane in the future. And the idea is that the higher the speed of the roadway, or the more left turners that you're projecting, the longer your turn lane has to be. Because you've got a higher speed, then that means that the, that the entry speed, is what the road designers call, the speed at which people enter the turn lane will be faster, and so they need a longer distance to decelerate. And if you have more left turners in the, in that design hour, that peak hour, then you're going to need to be stacking more motorists. So, obviously, your, your turn lane has to be longer. And this is just another page from that same document. It just shows how to apply the signing and striping for a proper turn lane control.
Chris, are the, are there different sizes of these stacking areas?
Yes, there are. Again, depending on the design speed, the faster roads need a longer distance for, mostly for deceleration.
Right.
And then, if you have larger volumes of traffic, then it's expected that you're going to form longer queues of vehicles waiting to make that turn.
Okay, but what I'm getting at is, the reason this was brought up was for really relatively small subdivisions. Is it possible to have just a really small stacking area?
Generally, no, because if you, what happens is, if you make it too small, then you don't, you don't have enough distance for deceleration, or you end up so that all of the distance will be taken up by the deceleration motion of the vehicle. We have a minimum distance that we allow, and it's usually two-hundred-and-eighty feet. So, if you build a two-hundred-and-eighty-foot turn lane, then really, almost all of that is for deceleration, and then a little bit at the end is for stacking.
Okay, but think, think about the, the one that prompted this, the one on Sixty-six, where the traffic was going to be coming from Sebastian. They're not going to be going real fast there. They just need some, some way to get out of the through lane. So, all they need is just a little bitty stacking area.
Right, but when we get into median divided roadways, and I'm going to go into that in a little bit, it's, it's another factor that we have to look at when we do turn lane design, is actually, you have to space out the median openings far enough apart so that they don't interfere with one another. Every time you have a turn lane on a divided roadway, you have to eventually have a median opening where the two left turn lanes from opposing directions will meet, and then that's where the traffic also comes turning out of the subdivision. So, it becomes less of a, less of a design issue with the length of the turn lane, and more of a design issue, do we have too many median openings? So, it's kind of a, kind of a tightrope that you have to walk when you're a roadway designer to, to get these in. But I think what we were saying with that development is, it's going to be too close to the intersection at Barber and Schuman, to be able to fit in a median opening if we even said that they do warrant a turn lane. So, it was, it was kind of, that was kind of the crux of the issue there.
Can you mean too close to Five-ten?
No, their, their opening was...
You're taking the second one was...
The signal to the north would be at Barber-Schuman, the signal to the south would be at Sixty-six and Five-ten. And this was actually between them, but I believe it was closer to Barber Street.
Let me, let me clarify. There were two projects.
You're right. There was another one to the south, and that was closer to Five-ten.
Right. And that was at the intersection of Five-ten and Sixty-six, and then there was one a little bit further north.
Now, are these state requirements, or are these county requirements?
Well, it's funny you should ask, because the very next slide shows the state design standards from which many of our county standards have been adopted. And in this document right here, which is the State Road, Road Construction and Design Manual, there's an index in here called Index Three-O-One, and it's, it's a typical turn lane document that, from which many of our turn lane standards have been adopted. And a lot of our tables have, have used these state deceleration and design numbers in, in getting the turn lane distances and lengths. So, yeah, many of these are adopted from state standards and are based on this Index Three-O-One that you're looking at right here.
Do you see any wiggle room on, on these developments there? I mean, you realize what our concern was. They're going to have to, the people that are coming out of those subdivisions, well, especially the one at Five-ten and Sixty-six, they're going to have to come out, go north towards Barber, make a U-turn, come back, and if they're headed south.
That's, that's correct. And if, when we designed that four-lane divided section, if we can fit those median openings in, we'll, we'll do it. But it's just that we may end up overlapping some of the turn lanes, because the median openings get kind of, kind of close. But if we can fit them in, we'll do that.
Okay. And then the other one, I guess is going to be, have some latitude to be able to get back out on Sixty-fourth, back in the back.
I don't think they had a connection to...
Yeah, I think it was revision.
That's, that's correct. Okay, yeah, so they would be able to come out the backway, too.
All right. And that's really why this whole issue came up, and probably a little bit of history, too.
Some other details with the turn lanes, the, the turn lane lengths range anywhere from two-hundred-and-eighty to five-hundred feet, and that would include just the storage and taper distances only. Sometimes, if you're adding a turn lane to a two-lane road or a four-lane road with no median, you have to also actually extend it even longer, because you have to transition the traffic over either six or twelve feet in order to form enough horizontal transition to form the turn lane. So, occasionally, we'll have developers come in and have to design nine-hundred or a thousand feet of a roadway just to fit one turn lane, and in order to move the traffic over twelve feet, so that they can get into a twelve-foot turn lane. And this is kind of what we were getting into before with Sixty-sixth Avenue. Left turn lanes are not always possible on median divided roads, depending on where the spacing and frequency of the openings. As far as the costs of turn lanes, they can range, I've seen them range anywhere from twenty-five thousand dollars for a very simple one to over five-hundred thousand dollars, if there's significant utility pole relocation, if there has to be a long turn lane, or if there's a lot of horizontal transition that has to be done. Sometimes, we even have to get right-of, additional right-of-way to put in a turn lane. So, they, they can get quite costly.
Does that low end cover two-hundred-and-eighty feet?
Yes. If, yeah, if, if you had a turn lane that was the shortest possible distance, and there were no obstructions, and perhaps a median was already there, and all you had to do was tear out the turf, and the dirt, and the curb, and pave a section, it can be, it can be quite cheap. But in other cases, where if you're doing a right turn lane, and you've got utility poles along the side of the road, and maybe one transmission pole, then it can get very costly.
Would you expect this one at Five-ten and Sixty-six, if, if a left turn went in there, would it, would it come in at the low end?
Well, we would, on Sixty-sixth Avenue or Schuman, we would be widening the road anyway. So, we would be moving a lot of the utilities out of the way with that. If it ended up being in the, just adding a turn lane to the median, no, it wouldn't be that costly. It'd be just a question of could we fit it in, really. So, really, the question is, when should we require a turn lane, or when should it be installed? We're looking at our turn lane standards over time. Our right turn standards, since the early nineteen-nineties, have been, whenever a development shows as part of their traffic impact study, that they're going to generate seventy-five or more rights in the peak hour. In other words, right turns turning into the development in the PM peak hour, then they're required to put in a right turn lane. Now, it's understood that on some of the busier roads, like US-1 or State Road Sixty, someone slowing down to make a right turn has a lot more of an impact. So, there's a second condition that, under certain circumstances, we can require a right turn lane being built for as low as forty rights per hour instead of the seventy-five. But we have these conditions in there that have to be met. In other words, like, the road has to have at least, has to have over ten thousand ADT, or average daily traffic, vehicles per day. Speed limit has to be over thirty-five, and the driveway that they would be turning into has to have at least over a thousand vehicles per day. And if those three conditions are met, we can reduce that right turn standard from seventy-five down to forty.
Do you believe that's adequate?
We, I'm going to be getting into the evaluation of this a little bit later, but this has been looked at in, in many ways, and we think, staff feels pretty confident with it, that that's a good standard, yes.
What roads would you say meet that criteria?
Well, almost all of the major county thoroughfares obviously have in excess of ten thousand vehicles per day. Certainly, all of US-1, State Road Sixty, most of Five-twelve east of Roseland Road. I'd say almost all of Five-twelve east of Ninety-five. The, the key is, in this one, to get the development that has over a thousand vehicles per day in the driveway. That's usually the limiting one there. Most develop, most new developments will not generate that kind of, of daily traffic volume, because a thousand per day is a hundred in the peak hour, and that's, that's quite a lot of traffic.
Can you equate that to a size of a development? How many houses, what is that, how many houses would you have to have for a thousand trips?
Well, if there's ten trips per day per house, then that would be a hundred houses to produce a thousand trips per day, yeah.
That seems awfully high, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
That seems very high. I mean, for a hundred homes, I mean, a subdivision with just fifty or sixty homes on, on Fifty-eighth, you would think would require a right turn lane.
Well, with that, number one, that would have to be their only driveway.
Right. Correct.
Right.
So, if they had more than one driveway and could split the, spread it out a little bit, then that might make a difference, too. But still, a hundred, a thousand per day would be a hundred in the peak. Yeah, they may produce, they may produce forty, easily produce forty rights an hour.
Well, that, the one project on Sixty-six, if I remember correctly, the, the most recent one was forty-one trips at peak hour. The, the large one, the hundred-and-twenty-eight homes or something, the Motley Family?
I believe it was.
That could be. I don't remember if those were all rights, but...
There was...
And the peak hour was forty-one trips, I think.
But Sixty-six has declared less of a, I think it was still to the seventy-five.
Wish I had those numbers with me, but I'm pretty sure that, that, that project would have tripped. It was forty-one.
On the second item, but I don't, I don't, does Sixty-six fit within the guidelines of the second item, at that location?
I don't, I'm not sure if Sixty-six has over ten thousand per day currently. But this would be a build-out. This would be a build-out, which it might be in the future.
When you say, well, at build-out...
These are all at build-out numbers. So, what you would have to do is, in their traffic study, they would be projecting out two or three years to their build-out year. And if in their build-out year, these numbers held true, then they would be required to do the right turn lane.
Okay. Okay, so I think those numbers, we need to look at that. Go ahead. Thank you.
On the left turn standards, that previously, we were talking about right turn standards. These are the left turn standards. Prior to September oh-four, our left turn lanes, our left turn lane requirement was that whenever a development generated thirty or more lefs coming into the development in the peak hour, they were required to do a, to build a left turn lane. In two thousand and four, after concerns by Commissioners over the left turn lanes, our Board, Board of County Commissioners authorized a consultant analysis to look and, look at and review our left turn lane standards. That was just three years ago. The Board hired a consultant, they worked with staff, and they looked at all of our left turn lane guidelines that we had, and also those used by the DOT and other cities and counties. But one thing they did a little differently is they also looked at the impact of opposing traffic, and how opposing traffic volumes obviously have the, have an impact on how many motorists in the peak hour can make left turns. The more opposing traffic you have, the less opportunities there are to make a left. And based on that report, a new county left turn lane standard was developed, based not only on the number of left turns, but also the AADT, or the Annual Average Daily Traffic, how much traffic was actually using the road per day and in the peak hour. And this, this leads to our current requirements, which are contained within Chapter nine fifty-two. And these are our left turn standards that we're using today. And as you can see, it's based on the average daily traffic of the roadway. And if you have less than eight thousand vehicles per day, then the threshold for requiring a left turn is thirty-five or more, thirty-five or more lefs per hour. And then as you get to higher volumes, higher traffic volumes on the main road, on up to over ten thousand, then it requires only twenty left turns in the peak hour to make them build a left turn lane. So, it's a staggered standard, and again, it's based on project build-out numbers for both the AADT and the left turn volume. But these, these here are the standards that we're applying today, based on the consultant report that was prepared in two thousand and four.
But on the oncoming, you're measuring it on, you're actually recording the amount of traffic going over the clicker?
Right. These, these AADT volumes are those that we go out and physically count.
When do you do that?
We do that once a year on all of the main thoroughfares in the county.
What time of the year do you do it?
Well, these are annual average daily traffic. So, what we do is, we count them throughout the year. I mean, obviously, we can't count every day on every link. But when we count them, we try and count the major roads during the peak season times, so we get the most accurate counts. And then we take seasonal count factors and, and apply them to that, so that we get that AADT number. It's an annual average, not the peak season average, but the annual average.
And isn't that also, whatever you call it, stretched out to when the project build-out time is as well?
Yes, exactly. It's, it's projected out to wherever the build-out year would be.
Now, I, I guess I'm confused, because that project on Five-ten and Sixty-six probably should have tripped these numbers.
Okay, well, we, you know, staff reviewed the numbers that they had in the report, and we can, we can pull those out and look at them again. But I'm almost certain that staff reviewed them and determined that the numbers were not met for a left turn lane.
Well, I guess, I guess, I'm beginning to understand the reasoning, because there's really not going to be a left turn, there's not going to be any left turns into that project. project, so there's, there can't be a left turn lane if that median's going to be there.
It does trip the right turn lane requirement, sorry, officer.
Well, and left even more.
Well, these are the, and I just repeated this slide, because the right turn lane standards have not changed since the early, early 1990s. It was the left turns standard that actually changed in 2004, so I just repeated the right turn standards here. As far as an evaluation goes, I mentioned the one evaluation that was done in 2004 for our left turn lane standards. Also, in 2006, just last year, the board authorized an extensive review of all of our traffic impact study procedures, and you folks probably remember the McMahon study that was done last year. And in that study, McMahon and Associates reported that the county actually had very strict turn lane requirements, and they counted us as one of only two counties that had a left turn requirement based on both the actual peak hour number of left turns and the AADT or the daily traffic. So, they felt that we were very strict, actually. During the review of that McMahon report in September of '06, the board, we brought those, each of the 23 recommendations in the McMahon report back to the board, the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of County Commissioners. And one of those 23 recommendations was to keep and maintain the current county turn lane standards for both right and left turn lanes. And on September 12th, the board voted 5-0 to keep and maintain the current county turn lane standards. So, this was kind of a second, in staff's view, this was kind of a second evaluation of our turn lane standards, first the one in 2004, and then last year as part of the McMahon report. So, with that, I'll stop talking, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think you understand our concern, and if you look at things like what's going on there at 66 and 510, we just don't see that those residents are going to be served adequately. And, I don't know, maybe it's not the county's problem to fix developers' issues, but we...
Well, and I don't want to leave the impression that they're absolutely not going to get a turn lane, because, you know, when we design these roads, we put in median openings periodically, and I try to get them in places where they'll serve the most turning movements. Because, obviously, when you put in a median across a road that's never had a median, you're forcing people to turn right out only, and then having to double back and make U-turns. So, when we line up those median openings, we put them in the most advantageous places, and it may end up that those developments get a median opening and a turn lane right in front of their development, anyway.
Right.
It's just that with our standards, the way they are, it was difficult to force the development itself to build the turn lane, even though the county may be going back and doing it as part of our access management later on.
Well, I know that the land development regulations need to be pretty specific, because when a developer comes in, he wants to know what he has to do. And the problem is, each intersection has, or each road has its own, you know, idiosyncrasies, like in the morning and at night, traffic is just backed up for, you know, miles in that, at that area. I would like to, I really think that the right turn lane, 100 homes to trigger a right turn lane, just seems awfully high. And I know if I say to you, Chris, so how do you feel that we, you know, what we could do to fix that, I think you're going to say, well, you know, we're really pretty right on where our numbers are today. The problem is, when we tell, when we don't make our requirements stricter, the people who are not living in a development are the ones who suffer. It's the guy who's out there trying to get through that intersection today, that's not going to be able to get through it next year, because we've got 41 trips going north, making U-turn, and then going south. And I just think it's, on these major roads where we have these major problems, giving, these turn lanes will help increase the capacity of the road. And right now, we don't seem to be doing too much in the way of expansion on some of the roads. I was surprised to hear you're going to four-lane that section of 66. And I don't know if putting in a solid median there is going to make a difference, because those people aren't going to be able to get out of that complex and make a left to go south on 66. Not in the morning, because it's bumper-to-bumper traffic from 510 north through the intersection at Barber and up Barber Street. So, I don't know how anybody would be able to get out of that development, anyway. And I don't know how you fix that.
Yeah, well, the, you know, the intersection was improved greatly several months ago, when we added that eastbound right turn lane on 510 approaching. That seemed to be a real catalyst for being able to move the traffic through. We were able to retime the signal, and we've watched that intersection many, many peak hours since then, and it seems to be moving much better. We don't get near the backups to the north towards Barber Street that we used to. And it's because that turn lane was able to allow us to get more traffic through eastbound, we were able to retime it, give a little bit more time for traffic coming out of Sebastian Highlands, and really start to move the traffic through. Now, you've got to remember, when you go from two lanes to four lanes, you're, and you keep the signal timing the same, you're going to be getting twice as many cars through per cycle. So, the backup should be reduced greatly with the four-lane versus the two-lane road. Now, whether or not that means people will have difficulty if they have to turn right and go up to Barber and U-turn to come back, or maybe they'll change their route and actually head out to US-1 or out to 512 another way, unless they're heading south, in which they'd have to U-turn. But typically, when you widen those roads and widen the intersection, get them working more efficiently, the traffic seems to settle down and move much more efficiently. So, we'll make every effort that we can to put those turn lanes and openings where they'll do the most good, but it may end up that they don't get the opening right there, and they're forced to turn right out and U-turn.
And I understand that the U-turns are the way of directing traffic. I mean, it's the way of the future, and actually, it's safer than trying to cross over four lanes.
Right.
I understand that. But when you're going up a road like 58th, which takes a lot of traffic, I mean, we have a lot of traffic on 58th, and 66 is being used a lot now, too. People are just, you know, they try and find the path of least resistance. So, when you're doing 45 or 55 miles an hour, and somebody needs, stops this whole line of traffic to make a left turn into the subdivision, you've got all this traffic backing up on a road that has really now become a major access road from north-south. And that's why I think our left turn lane and our right turn lane requirements, maybe we need to relook at, you know, rethink some of these. A right turn lane off of 66, somebody making a right turn off 66 headed south, is going to be slowing all this traffic behind him. So, I think on some of these major roads, and maybe we should, we need to look at reducing the numbers that trip the requirement. And I think 100 homes is, it's a little high for requiring a right turn lane on a road like 66 or 58th. Because if you had four lanes there, that's fine, somebody could get over in the left-hand lane and let this person turn right. But we don't have four lanes there. We only have these two lanes for these major roads that have become the arteries for north-south. I, I don't, gentlemen, I don't know how you feel about this, or if you've really looked at these numbers, or how you feel about these numbers, but I think the 100 homes, 1,000 trips per day is a little high. I'd like to see if we can talk about reducing that. And 30 left turn lane, left turns on 58th headed north into a subdivision is backing up a lot of traffic that's trying to get out of Vero headed north.
Maybe your concern is the two-lane versus four-lane roads. I mean, if there's only one lane there, they're going to, they're going to stop all traffic. If there's two lanes there, people can start getting over and get around.
And that's something we might look at, that might be the issue. The average annual daily trips on a four-lane road is going to be higher than on a two-lane road, but the impact on a two-lane road may be higher than would have been on a four-lane road on that left turn.
Well, not automatically. I mean, when you, when you go from a, I guess you have to ask yourself, does the traffic come first, or does the growth spur more traffic, or how does that work? But, yeah, which came first? But the, typically, what we found is, even as roads are widened, our growth percentages per year on all of the links in the county tend to stay pretty stable. It grows at a 3% or 4% level per year on all of the links. So, you can't say that if you change a two-lane road to a four-lane road, that you're automatically going to have double the traffic. You'll have double the capacity, but not necessarily double the traffic. Now, if people start to reroute their trips, because that's an easier way to go, that may happen, and you may get a little more growth that way. But, I think that you'll find that when you're four-lane a road versus a two-lane road, the impact of someone slowing down to make a right turn isn't as bad, because you've got another lane to get around them. And the impact of someone slowing down to make a left turn doesn't happen, because you can only make your left turn at specific points where we've got an opening. So, by four-laning it, you relieve a lot of these backups that could be caused by someone slowing down to make a turn without the benefit of a turn lane. It just operates much better.
I think that was Donna's point, that the impact is much greater on a two-lane road than it is on a four-lane road. I mean, on a two-lane road, if there's oncoming traffic forever, you're stuck there forever, holding up traffic behind you, whereas on the four-lane road, that's not the case.
That's, yeah, you're right.
And so, maybe, maybe the numbers on a two-lane road need to be looked at versus a four-lane road.
And that's something that I think at staff level, we can do. We can look at what other counties are doing, and maybe tightening up our own standards to see what, you know, we have a lot of two-lane roads out there, and maybe, maybe that's something that we can look at and see how existing driveways of a specific volume are operating that don't have a turn lane.
Right.
And we can, we can look at that.
I don't necessarily really care what other counties are doing, because I don't think other counties are doing it as well as you're doing it. I just think we need to maybe do it a little bit better. So, I think, Robert, you had a really good point, maybe it is the two-lane issue. And I'd like to know if you have some ideas on how you think it would, we could improve our two-lane road issues, anyway.
Well, we, yeah, I think we would have to look at developing some different standards for two-lane versus multi-lane, because a four-lane and a six-lane road probably have the same advantages. But, staff would be willing to look into that, sure.
Thank you. That's all I ask.
Just some flexibility, it's so stiff right now, it's just...
Well, there's one development that was right there at the corner of 510.
Yeah, that was the one.
66.
That was the...
I mean, I don't see how with the medium, you're going to solve that problem, because people coming from Barber, wanting to make that left-hand turn, you're going to send them out into the intersection to make the...
Right, they'd have to go, if, yeah, if the driveway for that development is so close to 510 that they can't make a direct left, then yes, they'd have to go up to the intersection, get the left green arrow and U-turn and come back. But that's typical of a movement almost at any median divide. Look at State Road 60, we have those situations all over the place. Going into McDonald's there, by Home Depot, you typically have to double back and get in there if you're coming from the east.
Any other discussion on this?
You know, just a comment, I agree with Donna and her concern, is the problem really seems to be that if you lower the standard, or you lower the level that causes a change, obviously, then you do that, it goes into your standards, and you do that everywhere in the county where you find that condition, and then it boils, comes down to that, the old money issue. And right now, it seems as though we never have enough money to get things done ahead of when we need them finished. So, you must be working in a very complex world of trying to make it exactly as it should be, because if you raise or lower the standard, it certainly changes the way you can use your money.
Well, this would be mostly developer money, because these would be lanes, turn lanes that would have to be installed by new developments if they meet these thresholds. And that's why I wanted to bring up that slide about cost. These are not cheap. And by lowering a threshold and snagging someone that maybe prior to the change didn't have to do a turn lane, you might be laying a $500,000 item right in their lap that they hadn't banked on. So, we just got to be real careful when we look at our standards, to try and meet some level of reasonableness when we set them, so that, and base them on real problems that we see in the field. And if it turns out that a two-lane road causes more problems for right turners, which intuitively you would think it would, then that's something at staff level, I think we can look at and make that adjustment.
Chris, when you, let's go back to that 66th Avenue, 510, that everyone's been talking about. Was there an analysis done as to what the cost would have been for a left-hand turn lane there?
Uh, no, when the, I don't believe either one of those developments required it, so there was no cost analysis done specific to a left at that location, no.
Well, there's also another issue with that particular development, and that is that the county's got it in its plans to put a four-lane road there.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of a, it was, it was one of those, didn't quite know how to play that game.
I guess you can't create different standards, but it would seem that when you think that there's something that's critical, and I agree with them, that is a very critical intersection, and I feel sorry for people who are going to live in there, because they're going to, they better get Sirius Radio or something that they can listen to while they're sitting there waiting. But, you know, it seems that there should, there could be some kind of a standard associated with the cost. If that turn lane is not going to cost to half a million dollars, it would be nice if more pressure could be put on the developer to go ahead and create that. Say it was a $25,000 lane, even though it didn't meet the standard, you could say, look, this is something that really needs to be done.
And, you know, we've run into that at times where developers have been willing, especially for a right turn lane, because typically, that's, that involves only right-of-way along their frontage, that they can dedicate another 12 feet and build a right turn lane. Sometimes, they want to do that, because it's to their benefit. But when you get into left turn lanes and long transitions and long construction areas, then you run up the costs, and then suddenly, they're, they're not so interested anymore. But, when it's something that they can control with their own frontage, they often want to do the right turn lane, and they'll offer to.
Well, I think Greg made a very good point here, in that we have no flexibility with this. This land development regulation specifically states these numbers...
Yeah.
...and gives absolutely no flexibility to the situation at hand. Is there any way we could build some flexibility into this? I mean, Greg's right, if there's a canal there, you know, it may cost $500,000 for them to do something to be able to put in a left turn lane. And maybe it's, you know, we can work other ways around it. But, there's the flexibility issue, maybe we could address it that way.
Yeah, I don't know any way you could do that, unless you just agreed to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and then you get into being more arbitrary than scientific, really. But, we would have to try and come up with some basis for, not lowering the standard, but raising the standard for, say, a two-lane road, or somewhere where we definitely felt it would have more impact, or get a greater benefit to put a turn lane. We've got to have some way to quantify that.
The point here that I, and Greg and I both were trying to make, I think, is that not all developments fit into a nice little package where the trip says, okay, now you have to build ABC. There needs to be some flexibility somehow in special conditions, which we think this is one of the special conditions. We need some option to be able to supply a turn lane for the public. It's just, standards are nice, standards are great, but they need to have some options when special conditions like this arise, and that's what we're trying to look for.
Okay.
What I'm trying to look for, anyway.
So, since these are a major road, 66 is going to be a major road, and 510 is a major road, your numbers should really kick in some protection for that, or some flexibility, but it isn't, I guess. I mean, that's the idea, isn't it? The ideal world is that these are producing that amount of traffic.
We have a condition in the world where on 66, it's not an ideal world, and it doesn't trip the...
It doesn't do it.
The system doesn't trip, right?
Right, you're right. Currently, we apply the... Currently, we apply these thresholds wherever this development's going, two-lane, four-lane, six-lane, whatever. We apply these thresholds as they stand today. And they may trigger it, they may not, depending on what the traffic study shows.
And that section of 66 is so different from any other section of 66, that I think Greg's right. I think adding some flexibility to this might make it a little more palatable. And I...
I don't know how to do that, but that's why you get paid the big bucks.
Well, they know how to do that, though.
Well, you know, with the segment between Barber on 66, between Barber and 510, that's quite a long distance there. And I'm confident that we can fit a couple of median openings in there and build left turn lanes, possibly fronting those developments that didn't have to put in the left turns. I think we can make it so that those people can get in and out pretty easily. But I still think we need to have some sort of standard for requiring the turn lanes.
Absolutely. I agree.
I think the two-lane road idea is probably a good first step.
Okay.
You don't like the idea of adding flexibility in?
I like that idea, too, but, you know, we can take small steps and go forward.
I know. It's taken my eight years to get to this step.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time, Chris.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Chris. That was great. Any other Commissioner matters?
Not here.
I have one. I talked to John about this before the meeting. Is there some way we can level out the load of these meetings? Last meeting, I mean, we were like hammered.
Oh, it was only 11:30.
You know, and we've got, we had two items on the agenda tonight. And I know it impacts staff as well, so, you know, is there some way we can kind of level out the load?
Yes, a good question. Sometimes we try to, actually, you know, we, it's pretty rare, but we've tried to cancel meetings if there's only going to be one item and it's not a critical path situation. It turns out, really, the main reason that we had the meeting tonight was because of Hibiscus Children's Center, their need to open the daycare at the end of August, the Board of County Commissioners is not meeting the month of August. They didn't factor that in when they were planning. They weren't aware of it. And so, we have to get that to you all and into the Board, and the Board's July 24th. So, just to give you an example, but you're right, sometimes it's even an odd. And then, when we start factoring EAR next month in August, you'll have a pretty steady palette. What we, you know, a lot of times, we don't have that much control over it for issues like I just mentioned. And we do, if we just are going to have one item, if they can put it off, even two, we'll try to spare you all a meeting, but that is...
I guess I'm concerned more about the meetings that have a huge packet, because it, I mean, it's a lot of studying, you know? Sometimes I come here and I feel like I haven't studied enough.
Right. Well, you want more pay? Is that what it is?
Yes. You can double my pay.
Double your pay.
Right. And there's not much control over, you know, how much comment there is.
Yeah.
Actually, that's what I was going to say. Sometimes we don't know how long a issue's going to take. We never thought a daycare last, would last as long, or a candle a few meetings ago. And like some of the things that Stan said, public hearings, we schedule several weeks in advance because we have to advertise. And for regular, run-of-the-mill items, we usually don't know until the Monday before the Friday packet that you get, how many items we're going to have, and everyone's in a hurry. Very seldom does someone say, "Oh, take it when you get around to it." Everyone wants to do it.
That's where they call us. I understand. I just, I brought it up as an issue.
And even though, like Stan said, even though it doesn't seem like it, we try to do that as much as we can with the limited amount of control that we have.
And one thing to take, try to take advantage of, one thing that we kind of thought was going to be good about tonight, and I think it turned out, you had plenty of time to talk about the turn lane requirements. You know how many times that we had the workshop issue, and it was 11 o'clock, and we just couldn't get back to it? At least we had some time tonight. Maybe you should enjoy it while you can, because you're going to have some full meetings. I'm afraid. But no, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Actually, can I just interrupt? I want back to the left turn lane, so you just reminded me. Excuse me. If you're coming north on 58th from Vero, and it's 5 o'clock at night, and there's a subdivision, and that person wants to make a left turn, that's fine. And then, there's another subdivision, and then another subdivision. So, you've got traffic backed up from three subdivisions that don't require left turn lanes. That's another impact I'd like you to take into consideration. So, the last guy coming in, you know, somebody's going to do something, because you just can't have subdivision after subdivision after subdivision that didn't trip the requirement for the left turn lane, but now you've got all the traffic backed up because of it. And I don't know how, that's why I'm saying flexibility.
Let me just tell you, we do a lot of, we do a lot of designing of these projects to try to minimize these problems. If you look on King's Highway, most of the subdivisions really access one of the cross-streets. They don't have mid-block access points. To the extent that we do that, to the extent that we do good access management, we can actually prevent some of these issues from coming up. Another thing, we're actually taking an issue to the Board that they asked us to a while back. We're going to take it on the 24th on interconnectivity. If we had more connectivity between these subdivisions, we could avoid mid-block intersections and the whole turn lane issue. I know you all have seen interconnectivity problems in the past, you know? Usually, existing residents don't want to be connected to even when there are stubouts. But these are some of the things that we do, that you all don't see a lot of times, and they try to mitigate the need. But ideally, you won't see the instance where you have three subdivisions in a row along a roadway, and you have three separate mid-block access points to them. Because particularly in most of the county, when you're going north-south, the east-west roads are spaced at half-mile intervals. And we're going to have most subdivisions, if possible, access off from the cross-street. So, we, I hope you don't see many of those three subdivisions with separate accesses in a row.
But again, that's another argument for the flexibility issue.
It could be the way Sebastian or the North County area is set up, because you don't have those east-west like you do down south.
Need to turn your mic on.
That's okay.
And that's what really messes up the whole area there, is Sebastian traffic just has a problem getting out or in.
We don't have subdivisions. We have driveways.
No, you're, in fact, I think what is kind of beginning to happen with the discussion is you all are actually coming up with criteria. You're talking about spacing, criteria, maybe if there are any critical transportation areas, and there's some characteristics that factor into that. And that's the kind of thing that I think Chris will need to look at. The other thing I wanted to point out, because now that I've been here for a few years, back when I first started, back in the old days, back in the 80s, before we had kind of quasi-judicial case law that gave rise to that, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission sat on the technical review committee. And what, yeah, we can't do that now, but what, and actually, it kind of makes you feel that when we sit here, you all ask so many of the same questions that we do at TRC and at PreApp starting out. And we deal with these standards just like you all. And I think Chris kind of alluded to, sometimes, it's not exactly arm-twisting, but it's, you know, suggesting that, you know, and a lot of developers recognize, when they can do it, to go, you know, to step up and do the standard, because it's easier to sell. I mean, you've got a decent way of getting into your project and so forth. So, we deal with a lot of these issues, too, the same way that you all do. And one thing that's difficult to plan on, because we don't have a real fine street grid system like you do in a traditional town, we never know what configuration the project site's going to be. We don't know if people are going to assemble, you know, if you get large projects, that may carry a bad connotation, but you get a lot more possibilities with a large project and more access points and things like that. Ironically enough, when you get a lot of smaller projects, you get less connectivity, they don't trip the thresholds, you get three in a row, and then you're kind of, and it's not a situation that you can necessarily plan for, because on the other side of the street, well, a developer came in and bought 10 of those parcels and did a large project. And then, on this other side, so the ownership patterns and the way things figure out, you know, sometimes you're in a situation where you can't come out with anything really optimal or anywhere close to optimal, and I think that's kind of what you're seeing. These last couple of projects on that, you know that's a critical area, and they don't have alternate access, and, you know, I understand your concerns.
So, again, another argument for flexibility.
Well, somehow, you have to have flexibility that is predictable.
The key will be to try to come up with the criteria, identify those ahead of time, because everybody's kind of got to know what's, unless there's some constitutional amendment we're not aware of, we kind of have to be equitable.
I think we do understand that a lot goes on before these projects hit here.
We'd just like to harass you with it.
Well, I just, back in the old days, there was that direct feedback so that, you know, the chairman could say, "Yeah, we talked about that at TRC." And there's, in a way, it's a little too bad there's a break in that, but...
Okay. Any other items? Can we have attorneys? Planning matters, I'm sorry.
Just a couple of things to update you on. I wasn't at the board meeting on Tuesday, but three items I wanted to bring to your attention, two rezonings. The Treasure Coast Health down on Oslo from Heavy Commercial to CG was approved. The Kennedy rezoning was denied, going, they requested to go from CL to CG on US-1 near 79th Street. Also, toward the end of that meeting, Commissioner O'Brien brought up a matter regarding vesting and concurrency, especially in relation to commercial industrial projects. You know, right now, under our existing concurrency regulations, vesting can occur only at the time of building permit. And as was discussed back when that decision was made, you know, there are pros and cons to different ways that you can approach that. But the bottom line is, the Board authorized staff to revisit that issue and revisit the regulations. So, we'll be doing that and bringing that back around, and that might be a couple months before it gets back to you all. There was a special hearing by the Board yesterday. It was definitely that one. And that was for the land development regulation amendments for cement, concrete, other heavy processes. It went two and a half hours, and the, that was the first hearing. The second hearing is on the 24th, and the Board heard all the input, and they did not direct staff to make any changes to what was proposed. And although they were, we discussed, they did not comment on it, but the issue was discussed about, you know, how it would apply, would it be, you know, retroactive or what have you. So, we'll see how that turns out, I guess, on the 24th, on that particular issue. At your next meeting, you will be seeing a land development regulation amendment. We've already advertised for it, and that's for the agricultural PD policies that were changed in the comp plan. We're now coming back with a few more details with the land development regulations, so you all will be seeing that at the next meeting. One other item, just as a follow-up to something that you all initiated at the 24th, July 24th meeting before the Board, we will be bringing forward and asking the Board to authorize staff to initiate changes to the mining regulations based on some of the changes that you guys had asked for, so that report will be going out early next week to them. And of course, we're recommending that they authorize that. That's all I had.
I did have one other thing. Can you clarify an email that I, that we all received from Wesley about Western lands? What is this about?
I don't recall seeing that email.
We got an invitation for the 6th or the 10th to accompany Wesley on a tour of the western portion of the county.
It's an all-day affair.
You know what drove that?
You didn't get an invitation?
Does that tell you anything?
No, we didn't. That we should be updating our resume?
No, I know what brought that up. That came up. Commissioner Davis offered to do that at the joint Indian River County-City of Felsmere meeting a couple of months ago. I think his objective is everyone should actually get out and see the lands that everyone's talking about, the 18,000 annexation area and the St. John's area. So, I think it's an educational opportunity. I didn't know that a date had been set. I didn't know that invitations were sent. I didn't know that some were excluded.
It starts at 7:00 a.m.
Oh, okay.
But that's the justice.
Okay. I just, you know, I mean, I could have called Wesley and asked him, but, you know, I figured this was a good public forum for that. Attorneys' matters. None? Then we adjourn.
Thank you.